At this time, I'd like to open our emergency meeting. I do appreciate that Pastor Ellen McCubbin from Hope Mills United Methodist Church is with us here this evening to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, please all rise.
Let us pray. Lord of us all, on this day of Pentecost, the day that we celebrate the sending forth of your message to the whole world in languages they can understand, we gather together tonight in a world that is divided. We pray for peace, Lord, peace that passes all understanding in spite of the frustration that reigns in our community and in our nation. We pray for all our first responders, Lord, that they will be protected from violence, that they will have wisdom and provide a non-anxious presence, that there will be transparency in all their actions, protection. Lord, they have been called to protect and serve, and we pray, Lord, that you will protect them. Lord, I pray for the agitators. I pray they go home. They don't belong here. They don't know us. They need you, Lord, but we do not need them. I pray for our town council, Lord, and all of our leaders here for wisdom, understanding, wisdom that goes beyond anything they already have, for understanding and knowledge. Lord, in the midst of this COVID pandemic, we have another pandemic of misunderstanding, of rumor mongering, of hatred. So I pray, Lord, that our town, this sweet town of Hope Mills, may lead the way in peace and understanding and transparency. Lord, bless those who lead us. Guide them with everything you've got, Lord, and guide us all to join together in love and peace, not fight against each other. All these things, Lord, I pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. We call this special meeting this evening in order to not only update our citizens, but also to show that we're going to be proactive in our response to whatever may be occurring or will occur in Hope Mills. Hope Mills has long been noted for being a family community, friendly to all, welcoming everyone, and at this time, we feel very concerned about the rumors and the things that have been on social media, on the activities that is occurring around us, and we felt it necessary to reassure our citizens that our staff, starting with Parks and Rec, Public Works, our fire, our police, our town staff, we've all been very much involved in what's going to take place as far as how we react here in Hope Mills. It's very important to us that you know that we have been planned, prepared, responded to the activities that are not activities that we believe are appropriate. We feel and have the same concerns for police violence, for people dying at the hands of cruel people. We are concerned at what happened in Minneapolis. We are. We're concerned, and we don't want that to happen in Hope Mills, and we strive every day for our police and our people that are our first responders, not only to be kind and concerned and considerate, but to do their job and to be respected by our citizens. That's why we believe we have a community police force, and that's believe that that's why people love Hope Mills, and we don't want that to change. So it's important to us today for our citizens to know that, yes, we are concerned, and yes, we want to lead the way. We've even had some people recommend that we have a citizens board to work closely with our police department, just so they know and feel the pulse of Hope Mills. But we haven't had problems in Hope Mills. We don't want problems in Hope Mills. We want to stay our family-centered, small town that has a respect for all peoples, no matter your color, your gender. We want you to know that Hope Mills welcomes all and that we are here to make sure our town is safe. This evening, this emergency meeting was called because our commissioners were concerned. Our commissioners were concerned that our people understood what was happening. Our police department reacted last night because of an incident that was taking place at our ABC store. This was not a protest. This was someone trying to break into the ABC store, cause damage. Our police responded, they arrested people, and it was stopped. It was stopped at the foot of the hill before it could move on up the hill toward our businesses such as Walmart, the food lines, and those types of structures that potentially could have been broken into, or our people could have been harmed. So we want you to know that we're working hard to make sure that we continue that approach in being proactive and also being careful to make sure our citizens are safe. I've asked the board this evening to allow me and to be in support of a state of emergency for Hope Mills. This state of emergency would be separate from the state of emergency that we currently have for COVID-19. This state of emergency would be, if needed, to make decisions without having to call special meetings, such as if, in fact, we did need to call a curfew. I would ask that this first point, that I just be allowed to make those decisions, to ask the board to please give me that permission by motion and by authority so that I can call a state of emergency in the town of Hope Mills.
May I like to make a motion to let you call a state of emergency if needed?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Before we add to that state of emergency, like I said, today, we had rumors that we were going to have a protest at one of our parks. They specified Main Street, which could have been either the park up here at Parks and Rec, or it could have been the park at the lake. We quickly mobilized our Parks and Rec department, our Public Works Department, our police, our fire, and those public properties were closed. They were closed so that we could make sure those innocent people that were out on the lake in kayaks, those people that were down at Big T's, would could be quickly moved, the park closed, just for preparation in case needed. We also did the same thing up at this, our main building up here, and also tried to make sure that people understood this was for their own safety. But what I would like at this time to ask Chief of Charito, because I think he has been there, working with this, working with our staff, making sure that we had plenty of police force in place, what his concerns are in reference to a curfew. So Chief of Charito, if you would mind addressing the board at this time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I'll just start with a brief overview from yesterday moving into today. Basically, we're all familiar with the events that happened in the city of Fayetteville yesterday, so I'm not going to go back over those. But knowing the close proximity, we went ahead and put our staff on notice for a call-in possibility. As the problems kept working their way towards Hope Mills, we began calling in additional staff. We had them on hand for when there were some problems, and one of them was the ABC store which you spoke of. We had received word that there was other businesses that they were probably looking to target, and so we deployed police officers in those areas as a deterrent and to help react to any problems that we could come into. Now fortunately, last night after that, we didn't have any more problems out of the one incident up at the ABC store. We had some crowding problems, but nothing over the top. They kept moving. As for today, we had already started making plans to have additional staff on tonight and reserve staff on call should things get out of hand, so to speak. About mid-morning, we started, maybe early afternoon, we started getting information of possible protests at Hope Mills Park. As that progressed through the afternoon, it ended up being, it's going to be at Hope Mills Park, it's going to be at Hope Mills Lake, it's going to be at Gulf Greenway, and oh, it's going to be anywhere up and down Hope Mills Road, and we're going to riot and loot and all that stuff. So we went ahead and called in our reserve staff. We have a double shift coming on tonight, and I have another shift on standby should we need to call them in. And we've deployed our assets strategically in town to be able to respond should that need arise. With that being said, our staff is not endless. We are limited, and I think everybody appreciates and understands that. We have been working with our law enforcement partners in the county to utilize our mutual aid options if they are available. And when I say if they are available, when you utilize mutual aid, that is dependent on what the agency that's providing the mutual aid is dealing with at the time. So far, we've had assistance from the Sheriff's Department, we've spoken with members of the Fayetteville Police Department and the State Highway Patrol. So we've got good communication with that. As this stuff started progressing, and again, I'll jump back to last night, I was in communication with City Manager Adams, Ms. Adams. I spoke to Chief Hodges briefly. This morning, there was more communication, and we also spoke with Mr. Sisko about Public Works with barricades and whatnot. So everybody is pretty focused on the goal of protecting people and property. Internet rumors, they are abounding. Are we having a protest? Yes. There's a small one in front of the surge. It's actually on the, between the car wash and Hope Mills Road. I've spoken with them. They are very nice people. They're very peaceful. I explained to them what they can do, what they can't do. I've given them contact information should they need assistance, if something gets out of hand. I have, we have staff monitoring them should something get where it is violating ordinance. Right now, they're not. They're fine, very respectful, very nice, and very personable. There's another one that's across from the lake, again, very small group. I haven't had a chance to speak with them personally yet, but we do have staff that's in the area keeping it under observation. So that part of the internet rumors, there's some, and when I spoke to the folks down in front of the car wash, they were here specifically from the posting on Facebook about the 3:00 PM protest in Hope Mills Park. But there's, you know, there's other internet rumors out there, you know, hey, they're looting Walmart, they're looting CVS, they're storming Lowe's. I would ask if somebody sees that type of stuff to call 911. We have staff up in that area anyhow, but if they see something going on, call 911. We'll get somebody there to check it, assess it, and then deploy our assets as appropriate. So internet rumors, some of it's true, some of it's not. We're responding to all of it because right now, at this particular point, we don't really know which one is accurate and which one is speculation. So err on the side of caution. Kind of like when speaking with Ms. Adams, hi, when speaking with Ms. Adams about closing the parks, okay? Err on the side of caution. It could be at one, it could be at none. Just close them on down. It's a public safety issue. It's not a big deal. Moving forward for the police department into next week, I've already been in discussion with my staff as far as adjusting work schedules to double shifts and keep a reserve component tucked away in case things get out of hand and you need to call them in. As anybody watched last night, that could happen very quickly, so we want to make sure that we're ready to respond to that when we can. Again, we are not a department of infinite resources, but we will certainly do as much as we can to keep that going. With the emphasis on not a department of infinite resources, the curfew. Curfew is an excellent idea. It's a great tool to have in your toolbox. It is a good, it's a good thing. Enacting a curfew too soon will deplete your assets too soon. And I circle back around to the group in front of the car wash. Under a curfew, they'd be violating the curfew. We'd have to come take them up if they didn't want to disperse, and I'm inclined to think that they want to have their voice heard, which is not a bad thing. Well, if you take them into custody for processing, that's 10 people, you're going to have to have assets to manage them, care for them, process them, give them their day in court. I would rather keep those assets available for the folks that are the problem solver or starters, the ones that's going to break stuff, steal stuff, burn stuff. Those are the ones that we want to have our assets ready to respond to, not the folks that are just merely standing on the side of the road with a sign voicing their opinion. They're not hurting anything, they're not breaking anything, they're doing it the right way. Those are the ones we're not, they're not the problem. The ones that are the problem are the ones, like I said, that are going to come in with the express intent to cause mischief, mayhem, damage, and injury. Those are the ones we want to keep our assets ready for to respond to. Now, with that being said, with what you folks are going to do tonight, should that eventuality come into being, which we're still early in the night, it might, it might not, we can go ahead and enact that curfew and start taking enforcement actions off of that. It's a very easy thing to do. It's just a matter of going through the protocol to get it done. It gives us that tool to start getting people where they need to be, but if you do it too soon, it's going to dry up all your resources. I've had the fortune of being here through many hurricanes, and inevitably, you have people come out because they want to see what's going on. If you have a curfew, those folks are violating the curfew. It's not going to be any different from what's going on right now. I'll give you an example. Last night, at about, it was about 11:20, during the height of the mayhem in Fayetteville, I needed to go get my daughter from her work. She got stranded at work because her, she couldn't get a ride to come get her because she was right in the middle of the Skybow Road mayhem. Okay? So those folks are the ones that you want to be looking out for. But as I'm going to pick her up, there's people out there taking photographs. There's people out there stopping and pointing, and they're sightseeing. As strange as that sounds, they're sightseeing. Under a curfew, we're going to have to manage those folks, and when you're managing them, you're taking away your assets that you really need to have to manage the folks that are causing the harm, if that makes sense. And I'll happily take any questions.
And I believe that if we authorize an enactment of curfew when and if needed, and then rely on you to be the person, you and Ms. Adams, to be the persons to say, now we'll do the formality, and the mayor can say we're under curfew, but not to put that in place until when and if needed.
Yes, ma'am.
But the board would have to be, approval of that would have to be necessary. So that being said, it's why I think it's important that we do this on the front end so that if it is necessary, we don't have to meet back again to make that decision.
And trust me, should that eventuality come into play, because anytime you're talking about limiting people's freedom of movement, I personally don't think that's something that should be made nonchalantly. I think it should be given the due consideration that it deserves. If that eventuality was to become a necessary thing tonight, or anytime in the coming days, because I don't necessarily think we're going to be done with everything tonight, you want to be able to have that latitude to be able to put it in effect, and trust me, it will be very obvious very quickly that it's time to put a curfew out. You won't have to think hard about it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm a person that believes in that we put a stopper in the sink before we put water in. So if we can enact this, where that, between you and the police chief and Ms. Adams, the fire chief, and Mr. Sisko, whomever had to be involved, the town staff, we've already got the stopper in the sink. So I would like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor, in conjunction with the town manager and the first responders, to have the authority, when and if needed, to enact a curfew. Have I done that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, and we thank you for everything you're doing, and we appreciate your foresight and your planning, and just know that we also, and I've been talking to the board members today, and especially, I think Commissioner Marley has been very vocal in this respect, and he's talked to Ms. Adams also, our town manager, the resources that you need, the overtime that you need, this board fully supports that, and our employees, our first responders need to know that we've got your back. If there's something that you need, then we're going to make sure that it's there.
I appreciate that.
The time, the overtime payment that's needed.
You got it.
I think that you'll see, this board is completely and totally behind our first responders. We know that we've asked the fire department to bring in extra people. All of that is necessary for Hope Mills, and I just believe that our taxpayers, I believe our citizens, will appreciate the fact that they know that we've got not only our first responders in place, but we've got extra time if we need it. So just know that you've got that resource that is available, and I don't believe we'd have to come back to the board to ask that. I think if whatever decision needed to be made, I think our attorney Hartsock said today that if the board is in agreement, that then, then those decisions that need to be made for our chief police and chief of fire, that that can be done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Members of the board, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Can the chief and maybe the fire chief speak to like maybe some of the comforts that their employees may be needing right now? Because as the chief said, they're going to be pulling double shifts, you know, food's going to be an issue for them, having some, something to, they're going to be pulling some long hours, and anything that the board can do to help make that double shift a little better, can you speak to some of the needs I might need or anything like that? Equipment or anything right off, maybe?
Sir, it's covered. We have town purchasing cards, so at this juncture right now, I'm not aware of any issues that we have for that. The only issue would be that typically the place we go get it is closed.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, our personnel have been told to, we have what's called a three-day pack, so, you know, they pack for three days, self-sustaining. So, you know, they got their own food and everything. Now, it's kind of, not a lot of room, but we're taking care of that, you know, in the future. But I think we're good right now. There's nothing, nothing has happened, at least on the fireside, that would indicate that we need, we have any need at this time.
I appreciate, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate Mr. Marley bringing it up because, excuse me, those thoughts were going through my head today. The police station just moved, I don't know if you have a kitchenette available to you or not. I think the fire department probably still has theirs, but do they have the food to put in? Is this thing? Walmart's closed, guys. Good night, good night, good.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sure that a lot of the, even the nonprofits in Hope Mills, the churches, the Alms House, some of the citizens would be more than happy to fix food and bring it to your office needed if you just thought it snowed.
Absolutely.
The main thing is we just wanted to know, let all you guys know that we're here and we're behind you, and we're willing to do whatever it takes, because I live in Hope Mills like everybody else, and I want to sleep good at night.
I don't think there's any questions, sir.
Yes.
Our guys have brought their teddy bears, and none of my guys are going to go home.
Okay.
Chief, proactive safety measures are paramount, without any question, and I think that the actions that you guys have taken today and the actions of this board, and to know that you have our full support, the entire board's support, and it was demonstrated clearly down at the lake park today in that, in the closing process, that not only was it a combined effort, it was a partnership effort, and our town staff should definitely be commended for all the efforts that went on it, the closing the lake. And everybody down there understood it. They were polite, they were cordial and cooperative. But if something had happened down there, there was over 30-some kayaks that were out there on the lake, could you imagine being in one of those kayaks, coming back to a lake park, and your car was being vandalized, or on fire, or something happening? So, and a big shout-out goes to Donna Gray and Big T's. They closed early, and that was a huge part of clearing, clearing out the lake because you had all those folks out from under the pavilion. They were already gone. That was huge. Stephanie Bentley from Yaki Lucky Kayak Outfitters came down to the lake. She was called, she immediately came down there and started calling folks that she had rented those kayaks to and was assisting getting them out of the lake park as they were coming in, and that was huge. Don was there, Bruce was there, police officers were there. I mean, it was just a total combined effort, and I just wanted to make, not saying that any other part was not today, I mean, I witnessed it, and I just wanted you guys to know that it was a first-class professional endeavor that was down at the lake today, and it should not go unnoticed at all, and you guys should be commended.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And the response that we've gotten for the innuendos, the rumors, that I've continually been sending those because I get those phone calls, I appreciate so much. Mr. Sisko, Don Sisko called me today from the lake to let me know that the protesters that they were saying I had down at the lake, there were really people getting out of the lake to leave, the kayakers loading up.
That's what they were.
Yeah, and so I think what's happening is being able to reassure people that are panicking, and so I just want you to know that also, so you'll know that I think the other good part about Hope Mills is our pastors coalition, the pastors, the ministers of our churches, I can't tell you the number of them, that their congregations, members of congregations have called me today and to say, do we need something? If there is something going on in Hope Mills, know that we're here, ready to help. And so I think that's commendable. Wesley Holmes, who heads up our pastors coalition, started the prayer chain today to make sure all the churches and the citizens that belong to those churches know that there's concerns. Our small business owners, multiple times today, I've had contacts with that we're securing our business, you know, Wesley Jeffries was one, just to name the first one that was concerned about his barber shop and where it's located because it was down there near surge. So what I see happening is a response, but a response in a positive way that they want, they don't want anything to happen in Hope Mills. So your response so far has made such a big difference to the calmness, you know, there's still some tension, you feel it, but it's not, I think our, over the board, across the board, I think our citizens understand that we are trying, we're trying to do what we can to keep them safe. I guess, is there anything else that have left? I wanted to make a point of thanking our staff and Ms. Adams and Mrs. Darlin coming out to do this, but I wanted to make a point of Public Works and Parks and Rec just responding so quickly today. You know, it was, we started seeing those notices on Facebook and social media, and we had phone calls, and very quickly, it was handled. I mean, it was, you know, we were shutting things down, and things were taking place so quickly that I think that response time is wonderful, and I think the other thing is what happened last night. I think we, by having those resources in place and stopping the, what could have been a horrible situation at ABC Store, that made a difference too, because I think that's what could have made a difference all, everywhere, is that just knowing that the community is behind the police and that police is doing their job, and of course, our first responders, our fire department right there with them. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Only other, only other question I got, and thank you to the manager for coming in, I guess cutting your trip short.
No, no, no. No, I didn't, I just.
Not that much short.
No.
But thank you.
I would've liked to have been back here sooner, but.
Yeah.
But thank, thank you to you for coming in and, and, um, the clerk and everybody that the mayor think, but. I know we got a meeting tomorrow and everything, but do we need to do like, maybe authorize an open PO for the manager? Um, in case something does happen and they need to spend some money pretty quick? Do we need to authorize maybe a open PO for a short period of time? For the, for the manager to take care of whatever she needs to take care of, in, in the event of an emergency, so.
She has, I'm sorry, she has, what is it, your five thousand or?
I think it is, yeah.
I think she has the five thousand.
I'd like, temporarily, I'd like to see that limit up, um, cause it, it, I hope not, but if something happens, I, I don't want any of the citizens in the town to say that we didn't do everything in our power to, to do what needed to be done. And I'd like to, before we close the meeting, I'd like, if we need to give the authorization to the manager, the mayor, whoever, Mayor Pro Tem in the absence of the mayor, and do an open PO, or up that limit. Um, I don't know what that limit would be, we can discuss it if y'all would like to, but I don't wanna get caught short.
Is that a motion, sir?
I'll make it in the form of a motion if I need to, yes, sir.
Uh, what, you want the limit to go to, and I'll be happy to second that motion for you.
If you second it, we'll, we'll discuss the.
I'll second the motion to authorize the manager to have the authority to do whatever's necessary to protect our employees and our citizens and our town.
You gonna put a, a, a limit on it?
What we're discussing.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that if y'all would like. I, I, that was my feeling, I just didn't wanna be caught short.
Her card is $10,000, limit ours is a five.
So, we got 20,000 available, quickly, if we need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do have a town credit card, I've never, hardly ever, ever used it. But it is there in the event that it would be necessary.
I have my wife to call you, she knows how to use it.
Well, if we, if we based it on the, the, the $10,000 credit card that you have, if, if you, if that is expended, then how much more would you authorize?
I think, um, and, and we may be setting a precedent here anyway. This may be something, Commissioner Marley, that, you know, because we have a lot of different, you never know when you're gonna have an, an emergency type anyway.
Yeah.
So, this may be some type of protocol that we can set a precedent at. I'd like to just go ahead and, and add to your motion that we set the limit at 50,000.
I'll agree with that. While the state of emergencies.
And that's in addition to the card she has now, in addition to the cards that, uh, our first responders have. But I'd just like to go ahead and just.
And that would be in this, in state of emergency?
Yes, and under a state of emergency.
So, that would limit it when it could be used, but I think that's appropriate.
Yes, 50,000 under state of emergency.
So, I have a motion.
You'll amend your motion, sir.
I'll be in my motion to include, um, Commissioner Bill Floyd's comment.
And I'll second that, well, I'll up my motion to that limit.
So, I have a motion to authorize the town manager up two $50,000 above what they currently have available in the state of emergency time. So, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand and seeing none opposed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, do we need to recess this meeting to a four tomorrow?
No, we'll just, this will be adjourned meeting. I was gonna ask anyone that's here, um, that needs to add anything to the meeting, cause I know we have, I, our pastor McCubbin, I've, I've been more than happy to recognize you too, ma'am.
I, um, just wanna tell all the first responders, you need anything, we got a big family life center, big kitchen, running out of gas, it's turned off to save money, but we can get that turned back on. We can set up cots, whatever you need. We got, and, and we're pretty centrally located, we want you to be comfortable, we want you to be safe. So, just.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, just, I have the authority to do that, church, and nobody else standing in my way, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And, and our, that's one thing, I think, being a Christian town with our pastors and all of our churches involved, we, we do have resources available to, as needed. Anything else that, um, yes, ma'am?
I'd like to say something, Mayor, um, first, I would like to acknowledge and let everybody know that we, we, um, acknowledging what's going on with Minneapolis, what happened with Mr. Floyd. I think that's very important. Um, secondly, I always thank our first responders. I did share a post on Facebook yesterday, it was not in, um, support of people rioting and looting and tearing up their communities, it was in support of people and having a right to do peaceful protests. Um, so, and that, so I just wanted to make that very clear, I always stand with you all. I am open to dialogue, committees, commissions, policies to build relationships with people. Um, and I think this is the time when we need to be unified right now, as much as possible.
It is. Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I'd like to say, thank you.
And just know that Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, we're a united front. And we, along with the town manager, yeah, we are, we are female, we admit. But the hearts that we have and the, the emotion we have, I think, takes care of us in a different kinda way. So, just know that, um, I, I'm, I'm proud to serve with this board, but I'm also proud to serve with the fact that, um, it's a caring, a caring board and a caring community, and our staff is wonderful. I can't, I can't express enough, um, the confidence that I have that Hope Mills is under, in good hands with you guys and your staff that works with you. Anything, Ms. Adams?
Um, Madam Mayor and Board of Commissioners, thank you, and I do apologize for, you know, whipping in here late, but I did make it, so.
It's your day off.
But I too, um, uh, would like to, um, you know, I, uh, agree with Mayor Pro Tem and the mayor, um, with the events. Um, I do want to say a few words about the outstanding job that our, um, first responders, and especially, um, the police department has done in standing up and making sure that, um, we are prepared, as prepared as possible, in keeping me, um, informed so that I can keep you all informed. And I would just ask that our citizens, please try not to spread rumors or innuendo, it does not help. It takes other resources away, you know, um, but, um, just know that just because you don't see something happening doesn't mean that we aren't working behind the scenes, because we have been since last night. And I can't say enough about when I called Chief Hodges. I'd, all I have to do is say I need or I want, and it's done. No questions asked, no, you know, what, i- it's done. And I don't have to worry about that with any of my staff, same with Mr. Cisco. When I had him on the phone, I knew the minute he hung up, he had taken care of it. So, I have full confidence in everybody, and I really appreciate the way that they have smoothly and, um, almost seamless, seamlessly worked together today as a team, and I really appreciate that. It means a lot, makes my job, um, maybe, you know.
A little more pleasant.
Little more, well, I don't wanna say easier, because it, but it does. It, it truly does, um, and it's very heartfelt, comes from the heart to y'all, I appreciate you.
Yes.
So, thank you.
May I have one more thing, if I may?
Yes, sir, uh-huh.
Um, you know, when, when these guys are doing their budgets, and they come up with this stuff, and some of us, they sit up and say, why do they need that truck, or why do they need that gun? We don't have time to do it when the feet are on the ground. You know, it's, you need to then to put it in action. So, sometimes when we look at those things in the budget, we gotta put ourselves in today's situation or last night's situation. I thought for sure that was coming to Hope Mills last night, it was on its way, but I'm glad we got it cut off, so.
Yeah.
When these guys ask for safety equipment, Mr. Merlin knows what I'm talking about. He, i- in the line of work he's in, I know all these guys do. So, let's take a close look at it when they make requests sometimes, that if we can afford it and they need it, let's talk to them about, you know, what we need to, to get them so that they can keep us, our families, our citizens, and our town as a whole, safe as you've been doing with the resources that you have now. Thank you very much to each and every one of you.
And the, before we close, I just wanna thank the board today. Um, very quickly, I wanted to do something, didn't know what to do, uh, but when we started, uh, I sent the first text out to the board, and then tried to find out what we could do quickly, because even though we're meeting tomorrow, that, that, I felt it was too late. We needed to reinforce our efforts now. So, this board very quickly, uh, said we'll meet. We found out we had to give, uh, public notice, six hours' public notice, and so that meant that we had to come in this time of day and then bring you also in. So, I just appreciate the fact that you reacted, we're here, um, and that we've made a point of our community knowing that, uh, we support you and that the board, um, supports our efforts of our staff.
Yeah, and I, and I wanna thank Jane too. I've been in contact with her today, and I've been in contact with, with everybody, but, but, um, this, this is, again, kind of unprecedented, and, um, no questions asked, and.
Yep, she was, Jane was at church.
I have full confidence it's all done when I ask.
Jane was in a good place when I sent her my message to do a state of emergency, she was in church. And so, but we worked it right out, she got out of church and she got this, got our notice out, so thank you, Jane, also. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, and we will see you all, uh, same place tomorrow evening.